I want to call the East Green Bush Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. This evening, we have all the board members present except for Mr. Mann. Ms. Steinbeck will not be here, and Ms. O'Brien, we anticipate being a little bit late. A little bit different order for our meeting today. We have a public hearing first, and then we'll go into our regular meeting. Okay, so if you could please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Definitely can hear the kids on that one, that's great. So, Mr. Simons called the meeting, public hearing notice.
Yes, this evening, the board is having a public hearing to approve a recent change to a tax exemption that is available to certain residents of the community. I'm going to ask Mrs. Mulligan to explain what this is all about and the qualifications for the exemption.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. So, recently, there were two existing tax exemptions, the senior citizen exemption and the disabilities tax exemption, real property tax exemptions. Those sections of the real property tax law was amended. The amendment was relating to increasing the threshold of income for those that are eligible. So currently, there is a sliding scale on the record for these exemptions, which would be applicable to, which are currently applicable to those that have annual income of $29,000 or less, and then an exemption from the real property tax from their assessments of about 50%, of 50%. The amended laws allow that income level to be increased. And what is being proposed is that annual income to be increased to $40,000 or less with a 50% exemption. That additional exemption impacts approximately 300 parcels and results in about 1/4% of additional exemptions on the tax rolls. What this means is that it does reduce the district's overall taxable value, which does result in a slight increase in the tax rate because there's less taxable value to a portion, the tax levy too. But one of the important aspects of this is obviously inflation. Income levels have changed over time, and that $29,000 level has been in existence since 2010, and that's why these laws were amended, is to allow the income levels to increase, so that would provide some additional exemption for those particular groups.
So this really kind of catches us up with the region. The towns and counties are doing the same thing, and we've had conversations at prior board meetings. So as a public hearing, we do have a call for any public comments on this resolution that we're considering this evening. Seeing none, we'll move to the next item is the board comments. Board members, any comments? I know we well supported it at the last meeting, so seeing no comments, we have consideration of resolution for the tax exemption to be revised. You have a motion to approve that. Michelle, second. John, all those in favor? Approved. And that will close, officially close the meeting, the public hearing, I should say, not the meeting, because we have lots of business to do. Now we'll move on to our call to order for the regular board meeting, 7:04. So it took five minutes on the public hearing, that's good timing for us. Attendance is the same, pledge we've already done. And then we move right on to our student council from Columbia High School. Rome and Cole, welcome. Good to see you.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you guys, too. Most recently, in our meetings, we've been discussing the possibility of hosting a Columbia Student Dance-A-Thon on April 12th and 13th. This will run from 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., and will be an opportunity for students to come together, have some fun, and spend a night at the school with supervision, of course. And there will be big prizes and fun activities for those who just want to spectate, and we will be sending out an interest form this week to students in the near future to just gauge kind of how many people would like to attend or spectate that. In this spirit of fun, we also have begun to plan our student council field trip to Boston, which we have planned for May 20th. This event is open to those who have dedicated and thoroughly involved in the club. It is also such a special event that lets us celebrate our hard work. Lastly, some council members will be attending this suburban council leadership conference this upcoming Tuesday. This is a place for students from all over the region to get together and share ideas, ideas of leadership, innovation, and passion for all things student government. Also, Ms. Arken's request from me to let you guys know that on Friday and Saturday this evening at 7:30, Columbia Players will be presenting Beauty and the Beast.
Very good.
And that is all that we have for you tonight. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Rome. Thanks, Cole. So someday, some of our students who are here, maybe they'll see you up there on the student council talking to the board members, right? Thank you. Next, we have our presentation from our students. Turnover, Mr. Alvey.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to DPS. It's great to have members of our Board of Education here joining us this evening for the annual pilgrimage to DPS. It's great to have so many of my colleagues here, parents, community members, and of course, our students here, who are going to share with you a very exciting thing that's happening at DPS this year. I want to take a moment, though, I want to thank our PTO for all that they do to support our students, but also to help provide our refreshments here this evening. Many of the activities that happen here at DPS could not happen without our PTO, so I want to extend my gratitude to them. Tonight, we've invited members of our coding club here. While technically, it's called the Coding Club, I think they're going to tell you tonight, it's something a little bit different this year. They've been working with Mrs. Conyers before school, utilizing a new product at DPS, and it's called Makey Makey. Sounds like a silly name, but it's a really great activity and opportunity for our students. Give you a little history, Mrs. Conyers and I, we met in the fall to talk about the potential purchase of Makey Makey for them to utilize during our coding club. After watching a demonstration with her, and also in the fall, we had members of the RPI Engineers Ambassadors Club, some college students that came out and worked with our intermediate students. And this was one of the products that they utilized with the students. And from there, it was an easy sell for me to make that, to make that purchase, to see what a positive impact it could have on our boys and girls. On another note, I also want to thank our business office for allowing us to make that purchase. Honestly, it is a larger purchase, and we couldn't do it without our school district's support. So we do appreciate that. Before I turn it over to Mrs. Conyers and my friends here, I just kind of want to share a few of my observations when I had the opportunity to go and watch the club. First thing, there's a high level of interest and engagement. Obviously, these students here, they're excited to come to the club, but just the process and all they're doing is very engaging. I think one of my favorite parts is this, the way that Mrs. Conyers has it set up, the students are working collectively, they're working collaboratively, they're collaborative problem solvers. And to me, and everything that we're trying to promote, you know, to get our students ready for the real world, that's a big part. And I think what we've seen, you know, with some of the things that have happened, you know, with the pandemic, and our students not having those opportunities to socialize and work out problems, this has been a great opportunity for them to work together, to come to consensus, and solve some problems. One of the other pieces I really, I like, and I think they may talk about this a little bit, is that every time that they meet, they're not working with the same partner. They're working with a different partner each time, it's random, and it could be a student in a different grade, in a different grade level. Another real-world experience that our students have. And one of the, one of the final things I'd like to highlight is that with anything like this, when you're working together as a team, part of life and part of our jobs, we go through emotions, right? And so, you know, you got to see some opportunities where the kids were excited, they met their, they met their goal, you know, there's that sense of pride. At the same time, there was also opportunities when, you know, you're working together as a team, and you can't quite figure it out, and you're frustrated, right? And so, it takes time and that, those opportunities to work together and talk, and for them to be successful. And to see them, you know, whether it was building their, their video game remotes, or building instruments, or any of the projects that they did, it was, it's just a really impressive thing for them to see. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Conyers and our friends, but before that, I would just like to take a moment, I would be remiss if I didn't mention this, and to recognize, Mrs. Conyers, she's been selected as one of our 10 local teachers to the New York State Master Teacher Program through the State University of New York. You know, her commitment to this high level of professional growth will only benefit our school district community. So I just wanted to give her a plug, and going through that process, it's a lot of work, and it's only going to benefit our students here at DPS. So, thank you, Shonda, for taking that. All right, Mrs. Conyers, I'm going to turn it over to you and our DPS Coding Club.
Thank you, Mr. Alvey. Do you have it on for me? Okay, it's on, sorry. All right. So, good evening and welcome to DPS. I stood here in front of you in 2017 with our first group of kid coders. Today, seven years later, I'm happy to say that Coding Club is continuing to grow here at DPS. We're still, it's a wonderful part of our school community, and our numbers each year just keep rising, so that's a really great thing. Before I hand it over to these wonderful little people, I first want to also thank my families that are here and the ones that are not. Thank you so much for getting them here every Wednesday morning on time, and for all the supplies that you guys help provide. I sent home a wish list consisting of things from bananas to conductive tape, and they provided. So you guys providing enabled them to really be as creative as possible, so thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Alvey, but I guess I should also be thanking the business office. So, thank you, Mr. Alvey, for allowing us to make this purchase. The kids and I definitely enjoyed playing with you some mornings. He came in and played some video games with us and created some music, so thank you. And last but not least, I'd like to thank you, the Board of Education. You supported us in 2017, and seven years later, you're still supporting us. So thank you so much, we appreciate it. All right, now I'm going to have my friends come up. Now, this is just some of our friends, and some of the projects that you'll see, some of them were created by them, some of them were created by friends that aren't here, and some were created in collaboration. All right.
Great.
This year, we have 28 students in grades three through five who participate in the club. Each week, we are eager to get here, get our partner for the day, and begin our work.
Ms. Conyers finds fun ways to partner us up so that we work with a new buddy each week. It may or may not be someone that we know or are really good friends with, but we get to know each other better through working together.
We spend an hour collaborating, talking, problem solving, inventing, and testing, and demonstrating what we have created. The time goes so fast. We get feedback from our peers, and we talk about ways to improve or fix our projects. Although still called Coding Club, this year, Mrs. Conyers focused on more invention literacy.
Invention literacy is all about learning how to be creative and make cool things. It's like being a little inventor and using your imagination to come up with new ideas and inventions. You can also recreate past inventions or add to them.
Invention literacy teaches you how to think creatively, solve problems, and have fun while making amazing stuff. It's like a superpower that helps you turn your awesome ideas into real things that you could show off to your friends, family, or in this case, the Board of Education.
Thank you.
This year, we used Makey Makey to help us invent and recreate cool things. Makey Makey lets you transform everyday objects into computer interfaces. It uses closed-loop electrical signals to send the computer either a keyboard stroke or a mouse click signal.
We first learned how to make closed circuits. Then we use Makey Makey to create musical instruments, video game controllers, interactive posters, alarms, and much more.
We would like to allow you the opportunity to come and take a look at some of the things we were able to create using our knowledge of closed circuits and Makey Makey. But first, similar to what we did each week, you need to find your partner. Please look for a board member with the same character on the underside of their Hershey Kiss. Together with your partner, check out our stations, make some music, learn new things, and play some games. Most importantly, have fun.
Sounds good.
All right, so some of you seem pretty focused on the Hershey Kiss, so I'm not sure you heard everything that Rosalyn said. So now, your task is to find your partner. So, board of ed members, look at the underside of your kiss, there's a Snoopy character. You have to find the one or two other board members that have the same picture on the underside of the Hershey Kiss. That is going to be your partner, and you're going to follow my friends with your partner up onto the stage. There should be about five different groups, and there's five different tables, so you can start at a table and just kind of rotate and check out some of the things that they made.
We're going to reopen our session. Because we do have another presentation with our students, older students from Columbia, we're going to move up the agenda, and I'll turn over to Mr. Simons to give them an opportunity to do their information sharing.
For a number of years now, our high school students at Columbia have given their time, their efforts, and really engaged in a very powerful leadership activity called Columbia Kicks Cancer. They're out to break the record, I think, that was set last year by the class of 2023 for raising money for leukemia and lymphoma research. They've asked to come to talk to the board about their efforts. It's a great example of the positive character of our kids. I'll invite those students that are here tonight from the Columbia Kicks Cancer team to come up and tell us about all the great work that they're doing.
We might have to raise that microphone a little bit. Or take it out.
Yep.
All right, so tell us who you are and about what you're doing.
Hi, we would just like to start off and say thank you to all the board members and everyone for inviting us to come speak here tonight.
Of course.
My name is Cole Dervaj. This is Patrick Donnelly and Corey Hamilton, and we are this year's Leaders of Columbia Kicks Cancer. So we are currently fundraising for the LLS, which is the Leukemia Lymphoma Society, with our 16 team members, who are all currently seniors at Columbia High School, and some of whom are here tonight.
Hi, I'm Patrick. I've been working with these two for the last year now on this. So far, we've smashed our original goal and are really trying to keep pushing. We've been working really hard on this to support patients and their families while they're in the hospital, and we want to thank you all for your support thus far.
My name is Corey Hamilton. First of all, thank you for all inviting us out here, and thank you, Ms. Taylor, for bringing up us at the last board of ed meeting, the reason why we're here. So, thank you. Us as a team, we run events roughly, trying to do every week, some two, three every week. The biggest one we had, we did a spaghetti dinner at the firehouse. We did probably like 20 raffle baskets that we sold throughout three weeks, at basketball games, junior basketball games, cheer events, stuff like that. We ran concession stands every Sunday for five weeks, maybe? And then that allowed us to get to our original goal of 60,000, just in four and a half weeks, and it's a seven-week process, so.
Great job.
Yeah. So with that, we had to change our 60,000 goal, so our new goal now is 100,000, which would be the first team ever in the upstate Vermont area to get 100. So that's what we got, what, until Thursday? Get to 100,000, so. Next Thursday, next Thursday, they get 100,000, so we're going to keep pushing, 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 and hopefully we can go from there. So this weekend, we have a baseball tournament on, our baseball camp on Saturday, a lacrosse camp on Saturday, a dog walk run by our team member Rachel on Sunday, the Antimatter. And then, what else? On Sunday, we have, oh yeah, we have a Chipotle fundraiser on Tuesday that, if anyone wants to go to Chipotle and help us reach that goal of 100,000, we appreciate it. And then, yeah, and then on Sunday, thanks to Mr. Simons, we're allowed to run a spikeball tournament at the middle school with no fee. As of now, we have 10 teams, and we're looking to get near 20. And do two teams, or two-person a team, try and get as many as we can, just play for four hours, fun little tournament to get money, so.
Thanks.
It's really good.
Thanks.
Yeah, so, thanks, all right? So, thank you guys for.
So what do we do with this?
Oh, so that's just, with it being a leap year.
Yep.
You know, our idea of it was since 29 days, $29 donation, but it sounds a little bit quirky, so anything would help. You know, our QR code goes strictly to our fundraising page.
Okay, good.
No matter what, anything helps. You guys can promote it more, send it to your friends and family. We all really, really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thanks, great job.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we're going to go back to our regular part of our agenda, excuse me, which is the minutes, January 24th. Any questions or comments on those? I was not present, and Jesse was not present. Seeing no comments or questions or revisions, I need a motion to approve that. Joanne, second. Over here. Michelle, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Approved. Going to the minutes from February 7th. John and Michelle were not here. Any questions or comments or revisions on the minutes from February 7th? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve that. Jesse, second. Okay. All right. All those in favor? All those abstaining? Approved. Now I'll move to the board forum. I'll start at my left with Michelle, Cheryl, I'm sorry. You know? Michelle, John.
It's nice to be here. Thank you to the kids and Mr. Alvey, even though he's out in the hallway yucking it up.
Now, here's his name, John.
Mr. Alvey, I have a challenge. All points. So, it wouldn't be a meeting at DPS without that, Mr. Dunn. I know. So, for those of you who are not aware, we've been together for quite some time, and he's a Boston Red Sox fan and I'm a Yankee fan. And I came up with a great idea for the Coding Club. They should make a sign that says, "Go Yankees, I suck." If you finish ahead of the Red Sox, you get to put it in Mr. Alvey's office.
Oh. Push it in. Wow.
That's a one-sided bet, this is. No, no. It's clear. I, I, if people have me back for the Red Sox, and I will wear a Red Sox hat or jersey, whatever you choose. I think that I have ever put a flag in the red. On my first football. So, so this is regular season. I want to make just the standing. Whoever, usually we do a September bet, now folks, but this, let's make it challenging, and I think the Coding Club could create the sign for the winner for this evening.
Wow, impressive.
Okay, right?
All right.
Dooley noted, Jeannie, Dooley noted, Mike. This is for the Coding Club, this is not betting.
Gotcha. Thanks, John. Yep, thanks, John. Jennifer, me?
Just echo what John said, I was, got here late, but the projects by the DPS kids are just so impressive, and it was so nice to see them presenting and explaining themselves so well, and I'm really impressed with what the Columbia kids are doing as well, so I'm glad they explained it a little more. I know there's some other team members here that didn't speak tonight, but you guys are all doing a really great job.
Thanks, Jennifer. Joanne?
I just want to piggyback on that, and I want to thank the Columbia kids for what they're doing. You know, it's a selfless act what you're doing. You guys aren't getting anything from that. You really have, I don't know if you realize it or not, pulled the community together to make this effort work for people in need, and you really should be proud of what you've done.
Thanks, Joanne. Jesse? Nothing? Okay. I have nothing against time, and we do have, part of our agenda was to have a Simon McDonald here virtually, and he is able to join us. I know he's at some events and things like that, so. Mr. Simons, you want to introduce him?
So John McDonald is our representative, and I think the best thing that happened in recent years was that John McDonald has become the representative for the large majority of the East Green Bush School District, if not all. So John has been very accessible to our district to talk about various issues that the legislature and the state government are considering that affect schools. He's always here to support us, and one of the first to always respond when we have concerns. So I know John is trying to manage two or three events right now this evening. So John's here to give us an update on what's happening, particularly with the state budget, and answer any questions that we may have for John. So John, thank you for your time and your flexibility this evening.
Thank you, Jeff. And first of all, can somebody do a thumbs up if you can hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good, that's a good sign. Although you may not want to hear what I have to say, but I'm going to try to be nice about it. So first of all, I want to, you know, I usually try to make it out there every year. I'm sorry, tonight, there's a large forum going on with the Bird Center at Hudson Valley, which is an important issue of Rensselaer County, and I've been jumping in and jumping out. I did catch some of the DPS students' projects. It looks like it's all going well, so I'm happy to see that. But I would be there in person if not for the fact that this is still continuing on. From a budget perspective, and you've probably heard and read an awful lot, I'm getting a fair amount of communication from a lot of districts. East Green Bush is definitely one of them. You know, the aid, I remember last year saying, "It's not going to get better than this," and I told this to Jeff from Superintendent in the office a couple of weeks ago, "It's not going to get any better than it's been in the past." We do have an increase slated. It's really not significant for East Green Bush. It looks like on paper, like a 4% increase, but you have a significant amount of money going into your universal pre-K program, which I applaud you for. So you really only got maybe just south of $300,000 increase in foundation aid. That's what's proposed, and if there's any good news, it can only get better from there. This year, when the governor proposed her budget, she, not she, the budget that was proposed that the DLB signed off on, basically did a couple of things. Number one, they removed the whole harmless provision, and then, you know, Jeff could give you numbers of how much of an impact it is to your district, but the reality is, over the years, there continues to be decline in children attending public schools throughout the state of New York. But over the years, we had a home harmless provision that even if your population or your census dropped, your beds data, we would still protect you and keep you whole. That provision was dropped. That's not helping some districts, particularly those that are rural, suburban. East Green Bush falls into that category. The other complicating factor, which is not impacting the city school districts more, is that the inflation adjustment mechanism they use, which normally is a 10-year average, they took the top two years off to drive down the inflation factors. That is having an impact. So we're in a position where we've got several hundred million dollars statewide to make up. If you were to be fully funded, according to the formula which we received, which we attained full funding last year, we need another $332,000 from what I'm told for East Green Bush. The question is, are we going to get there or not? And right now, it's difficult to say. Tomorrow, our leadership in the Senate and the Assembly will be meeting with the governor's leadership to determine what the final agreed-upon revenues will be for our state budget. Our estimates are that we will see a significant increase in revenues, which is going to help us in regards to restoring aid funds to education. But to be clear, there's a lot of other issues going on, particularly in healthcare. That being said, education, at least from the Assembly's perspective, has always been a very high priority, and I would be surprised if we do not restore a good chunk of the funds. There's already $100 million that we have latitude to plug into the formula, so that's a step in the right direction. So we are, you know, we're at an interesting point, you know? I guess the leap year is going to give us one more day to dwell on it a little bit. We'll have more revenue figures tomorrow. Our one-house budget proposal is going to be going in, along with the Senate, on March 14th, and then it'll be technically two weeks or so until the budget's supposed to be passed. This year's a little bit different. This year's a little bit different, everyone knows, if you live in the capital region, April 1st, the budget's supposed to be done, and last year, we were monthly, this year, we are not going to be in Albany on Easter weekend, that's, you know, Easter, Easter is March 31st, we will be here Holy Thursday, maybe here on Good Friday, but Saturday and Sunday, we probably will not be here, so, I'd say it's about a 40% chance we get it done before. I think more than likely, we'll be one or two weeks delayed, which still should give Jeff and the team and the board, of course, time to, to work with whatever number we end up coming to at the end. So, we're hopeful that we can make up a good chunk of the deficit, or the shortcoming, I shouldn't call it deficit, shortcoming, but time will tell, and game on. So, you know, like I always like to do, and I've been doing this the 12 years I've been in the Assembly, I always like to just try to connect with the, the district. I wanna thank the board members for your thankless service, and I mean that sincerely. Um, I'm actually working with the School Boards Association on some of their priority legislation, um, to actually just ma- make your life a little bit more easier, although I don't know what easy means in education anymore. But, that being said, enough of me talking, I open it up to any questions or comments.
Board members, questions or comments? Mr. Dunn?
How are you, John? It's good to see you. Thank you for your attendance this evening, I'm gonna take it easy on you because you're doing the people's work, but I just wanna continue to advocate for our district, and I know you do. It's become more and more difficult, we're a very successful district, we've had good financial and fiscal practices, and because of that, we're being penalized, I feel like, with a lot of these other mandates that I don't deem necessary and our community doesn't. And being an upstate, we're frustrated because we feel like, you know, downstate carries a lot of the weight in the way the budgets are done, and the communities, we serve six municipalities here that have six separate needs, and we're trying to balance that continuously. Pretty much what I say every year, and we're gonna continue to fight, and you're gonna help us in that fight, and we appreciate it, and, um, I just, just wanna voice that we need an advocate like you to continue to be our voice in this arena where policy at a state level is not beneficial to these types of communities in upstate, or, they're driving wealth from the state, they're driving people to private education because a lot of these policies that don't fit, we should have a regional approach to the budget instead of a holistic vote, because each community has different concerns and needs, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to say that. Thank you again for your time and service.
Thank you for your comments, uh, we could probably talk for hours on a lot of what you covered, I'm not gonna disagree with you, uh, you know, I'm in for the fight, as I've always been, um, you know, I, you know, I had three children of my own, I know how important a good, sound, balanced, and round education can make in the difference of a child. Um, and, and that's why, you know, we've been focusing on making sure that we're providing more and more resources to UPK to, to snag them at the earliest of all ages, because we know the sooner the better. If it's any solace to you, although I don't think this will go over too well, um, everyone's miserable, they're all over the state this year. New York City's kinda quiet because they have their own ballistics, they have their own chancellor and their own system, but one of my, you know, Long Island compatriots has a very nice little line that says, "Listen, I just wanna get these guys back to being, you know, less than," they're manically miserable right now, I just wanna get them to a point where they can, it can be manageable, and, and, you know, we've gotta do it, because all of you on that board, and all the people that are part of the administration, teachers, the staff, you're all there for the right reason, to provide the best opportunity for the kids, and we've gotta do our best to do it, because, to your point, um, you know, I've been very critical about the migration patterns in the state, I, I'm like a broken record in our house, because the reality is, one of the biggest challenges is the affordability of people to live in New York State. And I, don't get me wrong, I was in Florida last week to visit some folks, and I hear about how deplorable, I mean, just deplorable, their education system is. I hear the pittance wages that teachers and police officers and firefighters are, are paid for the same responsibilities they have up here. So, we've got a very strong system, but it needs the proper resources, particularly for the individuals who are, have learning disabilities, and, you know, the whole long list. So, we're gonna keep fighting the fight, I'm hopeful that we can draw more resources here, and you've got my commitment that I'll be in the battle, and as Jeff knows, we stay in regular communication, not just during the budget time, but when times need it. And we just, every once in a while, we actually get together with some of our superintendents just to say, "Hey, we're not asking for anything, we're just trying to make sure we continue to build our relationship."
Just, I have one comment, John, Mike, you know, the board president, um, you know, tonight's agenda does, we have a, a study being taken, um, by CASDA, the presenters here today, about UPK and sustainability of UPK in this district, and one of the challenges we have, even though the aid continues to increase, is being able to take advantage of that aid, and, you know, Mr. Simons has probably brought to your attention too about that, that threshold, which hasn't been raised in a long time, and I think that-
No.
-in order for us to take advantage of that and give pre-UPK to a, a more broad group of our younger, uh, students, which helps them, as you know, in the younger years to develop and, and grow, um, we really would like to see some, some movement on that and to help us utilize those funds that the state's giving us, otherwise, they just go to waste, from our perspective, anyway, you know?
I, no, I, I totally agree with you, it's, it's been a mystery to me, and, you know, UPK was adopted earlier in the more urban cities, Albany, Troy, Cohoes, Lawrie, so I hear it from them just as much as I hear it from you, and it's always been a mystery to me how, well, man, these kids are into $4,000 seats, and these kids are into $6,000 seats, I'm like, wait a minute, aren't they all equal? And so, that's been a constant battle. I'll be honest with you, we're gonna be focusing on restoring, restoring the, um, whole harmless aid this year and, and minimizing the cuts due to the inflation, uh, formula adjustment, but it's been on my list for five or six years to try to figure out how we can start to level that, because you're absolutely right, every child, when they enter UPK, should have equality.
Thank you, appreciate it.
John, I'd just like to ask one thing, I've spoken to you about this already, I'll be speaking with you next week about it, is there any conversation occurring in the Assembly, or if you know, in the Senate regarding extending the waiver for retirees for another year or two?
Yeah, we have, we have, well, yeah, there's always- We have bills upon bills upon bills on that, that's something that's decided at the last minute in the budget, um, just because there's, as much as there's a lot of people wanna extend the waiver, there's some union groups that are not supporting it, so we try to figure out the best way to make everybody happy, but we know, and I've been very vocal with this in regards to, you know, local government and local school district civil servants, you know, the, the pool's not that deep, there's not a lot of people, you know, we, I talked about the fact that student population's dropping, well, faculty positions are, are challenging to fill, so, we need to make sure we've got waivers in place, because that at least helps some, stem some of the financial blows that you're dealing with.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. All right, I think that, um, Jesse?
I got a quick comment too, very, very briefly, and I, I just wanna say that, um, you know, especially like with healthcare being a large part, I, I just worry about future sustainability, you know, and even moderate growth in big portions of our budget, and I, I just wanted to just say that, you know, I always looked at like healthcare or education, you know, like it's like, and, and I know you represent all of the issues, um, you know, healthcare priorities and also education, but what, what I'm trying to say is, is that, you know, healthcare can, can impact education, you know, and, and education can impact healthcare, like, so the better educated kids are, that's a future health determinant, you know, and it's just that, the, the, the more that, that medic, that that healthcare expands, you know, the less tolerance the localities is gonna have to tolerate educational increases, and I just wanna say that really, all these priorities interplay, that by prioritizing one, we also incidentally prioritize the other, and I just wanna just focus on just the long-term sustainability, you know, making sure that how one continues to grow, don't, don't, and that, just, just over the long term, and just recognizing them together is one issue also.
You're absolutely right, the social determinants of health are now permeating the healthcare system more, and rightfully so, and education is intertwined with that, throw in mental health for good measure, and you can see where we've gotta really make sure that we're being smart about how we're going to keep all this together, and this is why, you know, listen, there's no shores of issues in Albany, you know, I support all the initiatives towards climate change, and people are saying, "Well, we gotta put $2 billion in for this or that," I said, "Well, fine, do you wanna take it away from healthcare, do you wanna take it from education?" Because education, healthcare, number one, education, a close, number two, are our highest priorities. Out of $130 billion of annual spending, they occupy close to $100 billion of state money. They are the lion's share. So, when people come up with other great ideas, okay, I get it, but at the end of the day, there's something to be said about being good about the basics and making sure that we're not missing the priorities. Don't take that as being anti-climate, 'cause I'm not, but the reality is, we have to, we have to, we have to remember our responsibilities and make progress as best we can.
Yeah, good point.
Not easy.
Well, John, thank you very much again, you're always an effective advocate for our schools, and we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your work. Bye-bye.
Thank you. All right. All right, we're gonna go back to our public forum as part of our agenda. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green Bush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations in the district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not respond to sit concerns through the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and just state for the record their name and address or affiliates with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the business forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum through ordinary fish operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing or prohibited will be cleared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Does anyone wanna address the board at this time? Mr. Grignan?
Evening, everybody, Wayne Grignan, principal of Janae Elementary School, just want, we have so many wonderful teachers and staff that work in this district, I'm very happy just to announce one additional one, um, in addition to our master teacher, congratulations to you as well, um, today, Julie Hamel, kindergarten teacher who's retiring from Janae Elementary School, was nominated as, uh, top teacher for, uh, New Channel 13, so there's a little blurb about, about her that Mark Adam also put on the website, so I just wanna give her a proper shout-out as she sunsets into her retirement, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grignan. Anyone else? No? No questions? Okay. Moving back to the reports and presentation superintendent, we have Mr. McDonald, Columbia kicks cancer, next item is the UPK study for the district.
Yes, last year, the Board of Education and the administration had a discussion at a board meeting about UPK, and similar to what we were just talking about with the Assembly of McDonald. The district started a universal pre-K program three years ago when we first started to receive the funding, and we're always in a dilemma, because as we wanna serve more children, we only are reimbursed for a portion of the overall expense to the program. So, the board raised issues regarding sustainability and funding, and how could we work to have more of a long-range plan to be able to identify UPK as a priority within our district and see what we could do to move in the direction of serving more children. Again, we're not reimbursed by the state at the level of our costs, and so, any monies that, uh, exceed the state reimbursement come out of our district's general fund, which is funded by the taxpayers. Our board has also been very sensitive to the tax levy increases on the community, this is a program that's been well-received, but we can't currently serve all children, and we're trying to work towards that direction, and we've asked CASDA, uh, if they could identify a consultant that could help work with us to put together a study, and they picked a great gentleman in Lee Bordick, who is a retired superintendent from Lansingburg, but he's been in a number of different places as interim superintendent, he's done some work for us in the past. So, Lee is here to talk to us about the UPK study, uh, and to go over some of the analysis that he has prepared for our district and our board, and thank you, Lee Bordick, for doing this tonight.
Good evening, it's been a pleasure, um, seeing a board meeting, which I'm not the target of, and so, uh, and, and also the wonderful children here at DPS. I have a lot of thank-yous to, to share with you, certainly the, the superintendent and, uh, business finance person, as well as the assistant superintendent in terms of supporting this study. Uh, as, as you know, I don't know if you got a chance to, to read the report, but part of what we wanted to look at was the, the issue of the current program and its sustainability and the impact of, of that program going forward, and then what does the, the future look like? And, um, it's kind of interesting, um, I hired John McDonald's wife, and, uh, that was one of the better decisions I made. Uh, it's hard following John sometimes with doom and gloom of the, the state budget, but nevertheless, um, when you see these children, and then when I share a little bit about some anecdotes with the children that I did observe in the district, if, if you, if you really wanna change your mood in a very positive way, go take a look at those classes that are, that are in, in this, the school, one in here, and, uh, in the other three schools, as well as at Holy Spirit and Early Childhood. So, moving forward, uh, what we wanted to do is certainly describe what UPK is, and it certainly is a program which is, maybe there's a perception that it is, um, not as rigorous, uh, but it is. There's a, uh, early learning office at New York State Education Department has a wealth of information with respect to early, early learning and how it connects from pre-K right to third grade. Additionally, um, the, what I wanted to share with you was the curriculum and the domains that, that the teachers that are in the district that are following, and, um, and then, so then we wanted to look at what the current program costs are. And so, we created the theoretical with respect to the district, what would it be to, to run a similar program, I used six classrooms at 18 students, because that's the reimbursement of maximum, uh, one teacher, one teaching assistant, and 18 students, the maximum of the $5,400 per student. So, when we compare the, what you're currently doing with the four Questar classes that are in the district, as well as Holy Spirit and, um, Early Childhood, Early Childhood, as I indicate, can only take seven East Green Bush students, but when I did the theoretical, I had the six classes at 18, so it was 108 students that theoretically you can serve rather than at the 97. In the fall of this school year, you had 147 applications, and you can serve 97 students, so you have a group of families that were not able to, to, uh, take advantage of the program. So, I, I indicate the costs, and I don't know if you want me to go directly to that, but if you ran a theoretical program, if you had space considerations, which is obviously a limiting factor for you, and of course, the finances are also limiting, because as, I think you're, you're scheduled to get 1.3 million or, and change for UPK, and you're using quite a bit less than that, because you, you can't use all that money, and that money goes into a pool of money leftover somewhere, who knows where that goes, but, uh, be interesting to, to chart that. But nevertheless, with respect to the current program, and if you ran this theoretical East Green Bush program against it, using six classrooms here theoretically, the cost is pretty similar, um, my recollection is, it's in the high 300, like $382,000 for, for that program, and when you divide it by per student, again, they're very similar. So, as we project for 2004, 2005, again, and we use assumptions with respect to the district costs, uh, they're pretty similar as well, um, a little less expensive on the current program. So, as you go forward, um, in the future, uh, I was looking at, you know, a few recommendations for you at least to consider, and one would be to continue the same program that you have going forward. In terms of costs, it's probably less than $3,000 compared to this year and, and to, to next year, using Holy Spirit, uh, school, uh, Early Childhood, and the four Questar III classes. And, um, so, the second recommendation would be to immediately send out an RFP, we have communicated with, and I indicate Tutor Time, TLC, and they're at least express an interest- in interest to run, in Tutor Time's case, one UPK class, excuse me, and in the TLC case, two UPK classes. Holy Spirit indicated that they would add another class if they were permitted. So I would, I would definitely advise the board and superintendent to send out an RFP, stipulate, of course, the cost would have to be at the $5,400 per child rate, so that there would be no additional cost to the district. So my understanding as of today, there's 176 applications for UPK services from your district. I think it speaks well of the program and the need. And if those RFPs were approved, and they meet your specifications and criteria for approval, potentially you could have about 169 students participating in the program, very close to what the need is. I also recommend that the, the third recommendation would be related to looking at the current program and next year's program for program effectiveness, and making certain that there's program fidelity for each of those programs that are outside of your district, and certainly accountability, because you want to make certain that those four-year-olds are having the same experiences or similar experiences, meeting the same learning standards from whether it's at Holy Spirit School, or whether it's Questar in the district, or whether it's early childhood, or the additional potential programs that will come down the pike. And the fourth recommendation would be, as you get your capital project approved, and you have new space coming online, that that's when you need to do a cost benefit analysis to determine whether those K5 programming space needs with somewhat increasing enrollment will impact those new classrooms. And so you need to look at that very carefully. So one model would be, as you continually grow, that you look at whether you can bring those kids into the district and whether that's feasible. Another would be to look at a blend, have several UPK classrooms within the school district, and continue the community-based partners, which has a lot of positive consequences more than just teaching the children. They have their own catchment areas and people who are loyal to those groups, and then it ties back into the school district. And the third one, of course, is do exclusively community-based partners. So that's, in sum, I think, what I wanted to present. I did observe the classes, and you wouldn't be able to tell the difference between a kindergarten class and a four-year-old pre-K class. Very exciting teachers, extremely professional, very rich activities, a lot of social interaction. They were, the one class was doing the letter P. We did a lot about penguins. They had the big video with the penguins, and kids would talk about their penguin experiences. And they had pet penguin names. And then, out of nowhere, a blow-up Empire plant, life-size figure blew up, and the kids then come and measure themselves against this Empire Penguin. I learned a lot about penguins that day, but, but it was also very, very joyous and very cheerful. It was quite a very positive experience. So I commend you for going forward with that, with the UPK program. I know there's a lot of balancing that you have to do with respect to the budget, certainly listening to some of the realities with respect to the state issues. But for those children, and if the more children that will be participating, that will have a significant impact on your kindergarten program and your first grade program. Because those children, what I observed, they're ready. And they're being taught by really high-level teaching teachers. So. Any questions, Mr. President?
I do have a couple of questions. The community-based programs, if you go down that route, are they subject to the same standards, you know, as the state puts out as other programs, for example?
Yes, and part of your RFP will, you need to stipulate that. Yes.
Make sure that's in there, right?
Yes.
Okay. And the teachers in those programs typically are not state-certified, or they are state-certified in the community-based organizations?
I don't think there's a requirement for state certification, but they, I think most of them are.
Good. Okay. That was why I had.
And the other advantage of the community-based program is the fact that they could do some wraparound services for families.
Before and after care.
Before and after care, which is certainly a valued added benefit to the families themselves. And I know there's, the district is exploring agencies within the district to see whether they can expand it. But there's some limitations, I guess, with respect to that. But it's a very positive advantage for a family, working families try to get, have that taken care of.
Anyone else have questions?
No. Just. I have, I have a comment. Like, I really did appreciate the direction of sustainability in the report. I think, like, paying attention to the fiscal realities that we're facing, like, that that has to be a focus of, you know, you know, we do have mandated education to focus on. And we do have UPK also as a priority. And balancing the priorities and not creating false, not to say, but false expectations for the community to say that we can advance the UPK in a difficult fiscal environment. I think as the Assemblyman John McDonald just made clear, you know, just as they're, you know, juggling priorities, we have to say, you know, is there a potential, you know, that we can start a sustainable UPK today and create an expectation, and then have to shift and focus on mandated training if there's additional fiscal strain. And it's not about a lack of priority, but more so about a recognition that we want to create a steady path forward. And that's what I really appreciated about the report. And I'm interested, just as we approach the budget season, just to really discuss, you know, certainly, we want to do our best to make it happen. And just seeing, you know, where and how, and that, you know, that the ship is steady on the road to accomplish that. So, so I thank you for the report.
You're welcome. But I think your point is very well taken. As a superintendent of 30 years, you've got to be somewhat cautious and conservative, even though you're well-intended. And I appreciate that.
So I kind of have a similar comment. Like, you know, I'd love to open it to everybody. Right now, we had 179. If we said it was free, we'd have 350. And while I would love to do that, we know we don't have the space. We probably don't have enough community partners. I don't know, maybe we do to fill 350. But we certainly won't get the time at that rate.
That's right.
So we just, we need to take, it's hard, it's hard. It's hard to figure out where the balance is.
The RFP process would get us more agencies as community partners who would accept the $5,400. That's no money coming out of our general, no additional money than the $350,000 that we mentioned. And it is a way to expand. Possibly, Roy's been working on the RFP. Possibly, there'll be other agencies that will respond too. So you could get close to the number that's there right now. One of the things the report said, you could predict about 50% of a kindergarten cohort would be interested in doing this. We're a little bit over that 50% mark right now. But it's not the case, I believe, that all, you know, all families want it. But there are, there is a majority of the families that do want it. Some families do have other options.
Well, I think it's a great conversation. And I think that to really go back, we understand the needs, the long-term projections. And I think the part of the pathway to get there is having an honest conversation in public about what it costs to get there, and what our priorities are, and how we're going to try to get there. One of the obstacles that families have, young families today with the pre-K model as it stands, is getting daycare around it. So I thought the community-based piece is a really strong component of this project, because it gives opportunity and solution all in one. I have my children, I'm having grandchildren, and they're going through this right now, and they want to do the pre-K thing. But finding childcare to fit people's work schedules right now is really a challenge. So through being creative and open on this board, I think is a great service to the community, great service to the students. But to Jesse's point, you cannot sacrifice the other end of the deal either. So we have to be smart, pressure the state to prioritize this, because this is not an exclusive East Greenbush issue. This is a society as a whole throughout the country issue. And to go to your point about healthcare and it, they're all intermingled. There's no one size for any of this. So I think it's really important just to have these open, public conversations, so we're not misrepresenting any position other than what's best for all the students in this district, and create pathways at the earliest possible time. So I thought your study really pointed out all those things. And this, by having you do this, is part of our transparency process and our budget conversations that will follow. And you have helped us get to that point. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. So when we put out the registration information to the families through our website and through Parents Square, that's when we were in the middle of working on the study, and some of these other community agencies reached out and said, we'd like to inquire about providing a program. So Roy's been working with them and also the RFP. So I'd like to give Mr. Stiles a little chance to kind of fill in some details of the status of that process right now, and what your conversations have been with those agencies.
So first, thank you, Mr. Bordick, for, you know, for working closely with us. I think the study was great. I think it is important to look at the long-term feasibility of UPK. So this year, when we sent out the registration, you know, we left it blank in terms of what the locations and things are going to be, knowing that more is going to follow. So, you know, as of today, we do have 176, you know, families interested, students interested. So after speaking with Mr. Simons, I really wanted to continue to look at how could we expand the program at no costs, you know, for us, no expanded costs. So a few of the agencies reached out to me, I then reached out to a few as well. So, you know, at this point, before an RFP, this is just kind of some verbal conversations. Holy Spirit actually may be interested in also adding an additional class at no additional cost beyond the $5,400. TSL is interested in two classes, and Tutor Time is interested in one class right now. I think it is also important to continue our onsite classes with Questar. And we're also trying to work with some of our other agencies to see if we could get some of those wraparound services available to those programs. But it is a little tougher to do that, because we're here spacing, but really, I think more on their end. It's hard, because you're only talking about 18 students, and how many are going to sign up for the before or after care? So it's, there's a challenge there. So at this time, it could be about 169, you know, students that we could serve. I'll, I'm going to continue to reach out and see if more are interested. So if the board is in support of us going out with an RFP, we would be prepared to do that very quickly and go from there. And I think our goal would be to be able to provide it for all of our families that are interested, but still doing that at our current costs.
And again, it's really not our current costs, because we're getting money. So I want to make it clear to all in the audience and listening, this isn't taxpayer-increase money. It is all state-funded.
The new programs would be state-funded. The current taxpayer-funded portion of our pre-K program now, which we planned to, is about 350, 380,000. And that's, that's about .65 on the tax levy right now. So there is a portion in the general fund now. BOCIS is keeping their, Questar is keeping their cost per classroom the same next year, which is a benefit to the district. And their total cost minus the $5,400 per the 72 students they have is our actual, is our cost, our taxpayer-funded cost.
So I guess the question I have, so say hypothetically, we're at 179 right now, and then word gets out that this is gaining some momentum. Then we get to 200. Where's the line?
Next Friday, the window of applications closes.
Okay, so we do have, we do have.
We've had it open for three weeks, I think.
That's my point. As we move this forward, there's still, and if it's two people, it's two people. If the line has to be the line, I think.
Right. The 18 students per classroom is a hard number.
Right. That's what I'm saying. But the public needs to know that.
169 or whatever.
Right. I'm saying 169, it actually, there is, when I was having some discussions with one of the groups, their license has them maxing out at 16 students. So 169 would be if there's 18 in all classes, but it's possibly that it's a smidge lower. But also, you know, an organization could say, you know what, we were thinking two, but we actually have the space. We could do three classes. So there are, there is still, I am instilling conversations, and like I said, we haven't gone through any RFP process. So these are just, you know, conversations at this point.
So then the RFP will give us a hard number. That's the goal of the RFP. I think, too, the other point and great points I made notes is program fidelity, accountability, and community-based partnerships, I think, are three critical components as we move this forward, especially the fidelity and accountability aspect if we're going outside of that. And that will be through the rigors of an RFP, verification, follow-up, and so on, so.
And again, I think a lot of parents will appreciate the ability to have an early start and a leap and, you know, and have that babysitting capability.
We're having conversations with our providers right now, too, and see what might be available with our, with our in-house programs from Questar. As you remember, last year, we had a conversation about that being an important factor, too.
And the parents pick up the cost of those before and after care. So that helps supplement their programs as well.
It helps the organizations to be able to run those programs at the lower cost, because they have other revenues versus, that's not their actual cost.
So if you were to do an RFP, what would be the timing? Would you need, you would do a kind of an estimated timeline?
So we'd be looking to, probably have an RFP go out mid-next week. That would be open for three or four weeks. So then we're looking at a early to mid-April decision. So, you know, the, we want to make sure that the information to the families is still going out in a timely manner. Last year, the lottery was in mid-April, so we want to keep it about that same time. So I could see the lottery then happening maybe the third week in April, which would keep us in a good spot. I mean, you know, last year, the Holy Spirit RFP was done in July. So that was after we already had a waitlist and all that. So we really don't want to do that. We really want to have all of our sites set that would be able to let families know, you know, which sites would have possible wraparound services, you know, which ones will not, where will all those locations be, so that, you know, families are able to also make, you know, decisions as well.
So are you looking for some guidance on the RFP?
Looking for some direction regarding going out with the RFP.
I think, I think it's, I definitely go forward with the RFP. Because if you can, if you can get four or three CBOs to respond with four classes potentially, that's huge. Really, yes.
And the RFP will say, will stipulate at $5,400 per student.
I do agree with John, too. Like, I do agree also, like, at the reimbursement rate, that is awesome to have that programming. I think, too, making sure that regardless of how to spend, the program fidelity, making sure that, you know, we have a goal of effectiveness and move in that direction. So as time goes, we could just readjust if there's a need.
Right.
Well, we're doing that now with our current programs.
Correct. We do that now, the RFP process. And all of these sites, pre-K is not new to them. No, they all do have pre-K programs now. It would be, you know, ultimately, UPK that, you know, works with us. So it's not as though they're starting from scratch, you know, either. But, you know, if you add more off-site locations, you know, we would have, you know, I've talked to Mr. Simons a little about this, you know, have a small team go in to each of those sites once or twice a year to really, you know, make sure that what was in the RFP is definitely happening.
But the more challenges, the more sites are going to have. The more challenges, the more sites are going to have, and you guys are going to have to deal with.
Well, I was going to say supervision.
You know, I want this person on that second. You guys, that was tough for you guys last year to deal with.
That's why I'm saying about addressing the the amount of people and also with the after care services not getting into the weeds on that, because then we're rendering for them, we can provide information for people. But because then, well, my kid goes here and now here's what we have, here's their contact information for the services that they provide after, but we don't have that as part of our loop. We will be relayer of information, but, you know, then you're getting into, well, this is more convenient and I don't think that that would be
And we didn't do that currently.
No, I know that. But as this grows, the expectation can morph into other areas. And I think we, you know, we've all agreed that we would need to be very specific about what we want out of it, where we're going to do it and how we're going to offer it. And then have resources available and information available for other options in the after school hours.
I just want to add like to when I was thinking program fidelity, and I know it takes years for them to get to like state testing. And I'm thinking like, like just making sure that there's no divergent, you know, accomplishment across all of the metrics that that we evaluate, you know, as as, you know, one, two, three years and just, you know, if we see something.
Yes.
Yeah, we have our assessment tools now.
Yes, they will. There there is requirement for assessments in all of them as as
Which is good.
You know, currently.
So if the RFP, you have a kind of a draft-ish RFP, I assume. Is that something you want to share with a small? So last time we had a small group that looked at this, right? I know I was on the I was on the
I think that was initially, that was initially when we were considering actually having
Exactly. So I just want to make sure that maybe we do something quick.
I don't so I wasn't, I didn't oversee the pre K last year. So I believe that I believe that, yes.
When we first started, we had a committee.
Yes, so last year, ultimately, we had, we do have an RFP. So we're just making some adjustments to that, which if I'm 100% honest, many of those adjustments have already been done in preparation for a quick turnaround, so.
So maybe you have a committee meet and look at when the RFP responses come back.
Yeah, that actually, that's a good idea.
You know, have that committee look at the RFP goes out and then the responses come back, have a have a small group.
We have a high level of interest of seeing the RFP now.
Okay, well, we can send it out to the board.
Yeah.
Well, how about this, Mike? I mean, you're the board president, you've heard the conversation tonight to move this along. You take a look at it, make sure that everyone's interests are expressed. Then once it hits the ground, if you want to put together a committee to look at the RFPs.
Afterwards, yeah.
Have a committee to do a little evaluation.
So it's pre-con.
So you want both?
I'll look, I'll volunteer to help review.
Okay.
You'll help. You work with
Because I work on the original one. And then the post RFP responses would be a small group.
Right, doesn't even have to be anybody in the board.
So last year, we did have a small committee that went through the rubric with that's included in the RFP. So if Mr. Simons, Mr. Buno, if you're okay, I would envision the RFP being, you know, ready early next week after our attorneys look it over and then I can share it with Mr. Buno before it becomes official, goes out.
Perfect.
Does that work?
It means voluntary.
That's okay. I like to read.
Gotta move this along. We got a budget to work. We thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Bordick.
The only last thing, we all thank you guys, I appreciate it. The the only last comment is with respect to the state. The state has identified for their funding purposes, 259
As is the world's most expensive
259 four-year-olds at $5,400, and that's how they get the 1.3. So I would encourage whatever lobbying effort you can do to increase that $5,400. There's a lot of money left on the table all over the state. And because my my suspicion is, I'm not sure how sustainable it is for those community based partners over time to keep it at that $5,400. I think the before and after care helped them with their business model so they could get additional money that way. But so that that was my last comment.
Good one.
Thank you so much.
Good seeing you again. Take care. All right. So big topic for our community and for the board. Next topic is capital project planning, Mr. Simons.
Yes, we're planning to bring a document to the board at the next board meeting that will include the reviews that we have been doing on the overall scope of the capital project. We've been going out to the community, the most recent meeting we had was with the Phillips Road Fire Department in East Greenbush to talk about the capital project being $116 million capital project that will be on the ballot on May 21st, when citizens vote on the budget and the Board of Education election. Turner Construction is going through a process of reviewing some of the estimates that were previously done in the project and believe that some of the estimates are too low, given current construction costs and escalation factors moving forward. We're working to stay within that $116 million project amount because A, that amount in combination with the aid that is available for reimbursement and the schedule at which the aid is available called a maximum cost allowance, will result in a zero impact on the local tax levy. And we've been committed to that. The process that we're going through is to try to preserve the main items that we've all talked about, that the board said was a priority, but then to have a second tier of items that if the bids come in lower, we would do those items as a second tier. That's not a document that we finalized yet. The amount of money was in the overestimated was in the neighborhood of $60 million, more than what we could actually afford. I think it was around there, wasn't it? Or more than that?
Yes, more, about 212 million.
212 million dollars. So well, some things that we've been able to do is to look at, you know, the types of systems that we're talking about putting in, the number of different replacements that we were scheduled to do. We still have about 28 million dollars more to go to lower the scope. And we want the board to have a look at this before we go out to the voters. The things that we can do early would likely be in the buildings where we have the most aid available, which would be Goff Middle School. So we're having a conversation right now about some of the work that we've proposed at Goff Middle School occurring earlier in the project because that maximum cost allowance is available, such as the athletic fields and the other improvements at Goff. The high school also has a large maximum cost allowance. So we're talking about some of that work upfront. But then the other factor you have to consider is, you know, how do you coordinate this all so you still have accessibility to the buildings, accessibility to the fields, et cetera. So we're working through that process. The key items are still in there. The air conditioning at the elementary schools is still in there, the fields at Goff Middle School are still in there, the improvements to the fields at the high school are still in there. The plumbing, electrical, mechanical work that's been identified as really being in need of replacement. We're asking the architects and the construction company to do a little bit more of a granular review of some of our buildings so that we can not overestimate high cover everything to be more precise in our estimate. And we're working, working through that that process right now. I think you had a meeting today or you have a meeting.
We did have a meeting today. We have a meeting tomorrow and probably a few more.
Right, so we'll be, we'll be putting this together. And again, the further you out you go out in the years, the more the escalation factor. So we're trying to move some of the more important items closer to the beginning of the schedule. And everything is dependent on SED approval and all of that. It's it's coming together and we're trying to commit to everything that we said we were going to do.
Quick, quick question, Jeff. I'm wondering just about, is this before like the permitting process? And I think you mentioned also SED approval. Because I'm thinking this is the possibility of also requirements being placed on that's that's above what the contractor is anticipating. So I think the contractor is probably looking at their material cost, their labor. And I'm just wondering, like, is it possible that even at the point of scoping a specific number, are we trying to come underneath and anticipate?
Turner is very familiar with those types of costs that are involved because they're a large national company. So they they have data available. They have comparable projects that they've done recently that are similar into the design and scope that we're talking about. So they their numbers are pretty reliable.
All right, next we have our discussion items. We have three of those. The first one is the tax cap preliminary calculation. Is that something, Jennifer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buno. So annually, we need to go through a process of calculating what the property tax levy cap limit will be. As many of you are familiar with, this is basically, we're limited to the amount that we can increase our tax levy. There are multiple factors that come into play in calculating our property tax levy cap calculation. And I'm just going to walk through that and explain what some of the changes are. With this calculation, we first start with what our tax levy was for the 2324 fiscal year. So that's where we are now. We label it as prior year because we're talking about the 2425 budget. So we first start with the original tax levy for 2324, which was at the 58,666,419. Then the next component that comes into play is the tax base growth factor. So the New York State Department of Tax and Finance releases the tax base base growth factor for each school district on an annual basis. And basically, this accounts for the changes in the full taxable value of the district. So it's permitted, you know, as your district grows in tax value that you're going to be able to levy a little bit more. So our growth factor was 1.0058. That was slightly lower than what the growth factor was last year, which was at 1.0073. So that component of the tax base growth factor provides an increase in our levy of about 0.58% or an ability to levy $340,000. The next component is our pilots. So these are our payments in lieu of taxes. And we need to consider what our pilot was receivable, not what we actually received, but the receivable that we planned in our tax cap calculation last year. We need to add that back. The next component is the capital tax levy exclusion. So what the capital tax levy exclusion represents is the amount of levy that we need to support our capital needs. So there's a few things that come into play with that, our debt service, our building aid, and any reserves that may support that particular, those capital expenditures. So we need to remove that from the tax levy cap calculation, the value that was placed for last year. The next component, which is labeled E on the chart, is the allowable levy growth factor. And this is where we hear about the 2% tax cap. It's not really a 2% tax cap, but this is where that notion comes from. It's basically the lower of the CPI or 2%. So CPI for this fiscal year was set at 4.12%, and they're only allowing us to go up to 2%.
So this is where Mr. McDonald's mentioned the state with their interesting little checkery throughout the high-ish years. So now we have this low amount that gets popped into that formula. So even with the inflation factors being so high.
And going back to when the COVID years, you know, we were below 2%. So that allowable levy growth factor was under 2%. But we're now three years in, back in '22, it was at the actual CPI was 4.7%. This growth factor was limited to two. In 2023, the inflation factor was 8%. We were limited to two. And then for 2024, which is this factor here, it's actually at 4.12%, but we're limited to two. So that 2% allowable levy growth factor provides growth in the levy of 1.2 million or 2.1%. But there's other things that still come into play. So now it's the current year item. So what is our pilot receivable going to be looking at 2425? What is our estimate of the pilots that we're going to be coming in next year? So basically, if there's an increase in your pilot revenue, that's going to reduce the amount of levy that you can have. And that's because you're receiving that pilot revenue in that particular bucket. So you don't need it in the levy bucket. So that's like the rationale as to why the pilot change receivable is. So our pilot receivables are estimated to increase by $242,000, which reduces our amount of we can levy because we're going to be receiving that in the pilot revenue bucket. The next piece is the capital tax levy exclusion for 2425. So we already looked at what we had in 2324, which was the number above 3,441. And now we have the new amount for 2425, which is at $2.4 million. And this is really where there's a major impact on our tax levy cap calculation this year. And what goes into this is our debt service and our building aid. But fortunately, what ended up happening, we had a lot of final cost reports that were filed on our 2017 capital project that resulted in additional building aid coming into the district. So what basically that means is that there's less levy needed to to cover your capital expenditures. So there is revenue coming in for building aid that is not needed in this tax levy calculation. Okay? So even though we see it reducing our tax levy cap calculation, it is going to be coming into the district. Okay, just in a different form through through the state building aid. And then the last component is the pension exclusion. So not for the teacher's retirement system, but for the employer's retirement system, there was a slight increase over the limit that they set and that resulted in a very small amount that we were able to add back into the tax cap calculation. So when you roll forward all those component, you know, together, it results in only a 0.55% allowed growth in the tax levy or $322,000, which is the lowest it's been. You can see it below on the chart than it has been in the last several years. So we're working very hard to really understand our revenue projections and we're also working on bringing the expenses into that picture. Obviously, as Assembly McDonald said, you know, the state aid picture is still in flux a little bit, so there'll be more information that comes about with that. So but basically, this is our preliminary tax cap calculation. There's always additional information that could come in about pilots or other that could alter this calculation. So but this is what we would need to file with the state by Friday, by March 1st. And then the final tax cap calculation gets filed towards the end of April.
Is this like, I'm just wondering, looking into budget season, is this what we would use, like, like looking at our projections moving forward?
In terms of our revenue projections?
Yes.
So one of the things that we would need to do is work on calculating what the property tax cap could look like in future years so we understand what the levying authority is. Now, with the property tax cap, this is the levy limit with just a simple, a simple majority in the regular school budget vote. There are opportunities to consider if there's an override. We're not talking about that right now, but, you know, there are other opportunities if there was a need to exceed the the tax levy limit. There are procedures in the law to consider that.
Anyone else, questions, comments? So you'll be filing this report by Friday?
Yes, it's just the preliminary
And then the final report.
And the final report.
So pretty much, not much of a tax levy growth there, but there are other revenue sources we're going to look at. Still early, right? We'll we'll see the bigger numbers as the budget comes together and make some decisions. Okay, thanks, Jeff. The budget calendar in District Voe, is that you again, Jeff? Or Mr. Simons?
I just wanted to point out a couple of
Oh, okay, so.
On here, March 13th, which is our next board meeting, is our scheduled first budget workshop. So some of the information that Jennifer is talking about, we'll be rolling out to the board in advance of that meeting. And we'll be talking about that that publicly because that's our first scheduled budget workshop. So Jennifer's been doing a lot of work with looking at expenditures with Mary Rizzi and looking at expenditures with Mary Rizzi. And you're going to see a more granular approach than what's been used in the past because she's very very good at just looking at exactly what we're spending right now. You'll probably be seeing a little bit more information, not just on the budget, but the actual expenditures. And she's working on the projected revenues. That is not just the foundation aid and the tax levy, but the building aid and the other categorical aids. As she's also trying to look at where where we stand currently in this current year with revenues and expenditures. So she's working through all of that and she's very, very busy.
And just one thing I'd like to point out on the budget calendar, because we did actually add under the April timeframe, what the latest possible adoption date of the budget is. The original calendar had it, our normal plan would be on April 9th, but the budget can be adopted as late as April 23rd. So we just added that piece of information, understanding what is happening with the state budget.
So that could be a special meeting you're talking about? Maybe we have to do something later? Is that what?
Just a point of reference as to what's the latest possible date to adopt the budget.
The second budget workshop on the 20th was in if needed. That was the extra meeting.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on the calendar? And the third item for discussion is the draft school calendar for 2425.
Thank you, Mr. Simons. Our calendar committee met on January 22nd and February 5th to develop the 2024-2025 school calendar. We do have a few new additions for next year, one being Asian Lunar New Year. That holiday was recently approved at the state level to be a required school holiday. That is going to be observed next year on January 29th. With that in mind, we needed to then create a new or an additional student attendance day. So the way we did that is we are going down from five emergency school closing days to four emergency school closing days. And if our district experiences inclement weather beyond those four days, we will then be utilizing our remote instruction plan so that the April recess would not be affected.
They're going to recognize that during the region stage.
Yes, yes.
Because that is.
So on our calendar, we didn't know when those regions days would be and January 29th will not be regions. Our schools will be closed that day. The calendar is comprised of 182 teacher workdays. Our superintendent's conference day begins on September 3rd. The second superintendent conference day is September 4th. And then the third this year is going to be April 11th. We also have two full day professional development days, one being November 1st. We received positive feedback when we had it November 1st this year. So we're going to be continuing that. And then the second full day PD day will be March 14th, which is also the regional professional development day. And then our students are going to start on Thursday, September 5th. Does anyone have any questions about the draft school calendar?
Yeah, two question, Marissa. When's the last day of school for all staff?
The last day of school is going to be late this year. It's going to be June 27.
In graduation?
Mr. Harkin, do you know?
28?
Thank you.
Later and later. Gotcha. A long school calendar. Yeah. Okay. So do we do anything with this?
We're gonna move it to the next meeting to be adopted.
Okay, sounds good. All right, that concludes our discussion items. Rather business. First item, approval of programs for residents, children, disabilities. Any questions or comments on that? Need a motion to approve? Joanna, you have a second. John, all those in favor? Approved. Sis and Janay Auditorium Video System bid. Any background on this, Mr. Simons?
I think I'll ask Peter Goodwin. This is something that has been in Peter's technology budget this year.
Okay.
But just getting to the bid.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Simons. So as some of you are aware, when we do hold events in Janay Auditorium, we usually use a projector on a cart. And there's a lot of other things on that cart and a lot of wires. And unfortunately, that's a function of not having a proper a proper projector installed in the ceiling height. So I've been working to get that accomplished so that that would no longer affect performances, affect meetings. And, you know, we came up with the design and it's recently gone out to bid. And it's on the agenda tonight for approval.
Excellent. Any questions for Peter? Okay, need a motion to approve the bid. John, you have a second. Jesse, all those in favor? Approved. All right, go forth. The, we have two policies on here. Item C and D. First one is homebound instruction. Second reading. Were there any comments prior to this?
There have been no changes to it. I received.
Good, thank you. Any final comments, Board members? No? Need a motion to approve that? Jennifer, second. Jesse, all those in favor? Approved. And then the second one was the timeout and physical restraint. Second reading. Any changes to that one?
There have been no changes.
Doesn't change it, right? Need a motion to approve that. Jennifer, you need a second? Cheryl, all those in favor? Approved. Moving on to committee reports. We'll start with Marissa.
Thank you, Mr. Vino. Our Workplace Violence Prevention Committee recently met and during that meeting, we had mapped out a plan to conduct our site assessments. Those site assessments had to be completed no later than March 4th, 2024, in accordance with Department of Labor guidelines. I spoke with our Health and Safety Specialist, Lisa Lyons, today. Our last site assessment was Goff Middle School. That was completed this afternoon. And they are working on putting together a typed report. Once we have all of those reports gathered, we are going to be meeting with our Workplace Violence Prevention Committee to review everything. Carrie Marble, the Questar School Security Specialist, has been very helpful in this process and supporting us along the way. She's been, along with Lisa Lyons, at every meeting for the site assessment. And all of our collective bargaining units were welcome to participate. Just a couple of questions that were asked as part of this would be, you know, does the facility exchange money as part of job duty? So we evaluated the risk for that component. Looking at employees who work in the early morning hours or late at night, such as our second or third shift custodial personnel. We've also looked at, you know, does the school district have a security staff present? Do our employees, are they required to wear ID badges? Do they have swipe card access? Do we have a visitor policy? Do we have lighting in our parking lots? Are our offices equipped with telephones? Are the teachers' office spaces equipped with telephones? Do we have evacuation and safety protocols? So there was a number of areas that were looked at. Each question asked was the same question throughout all of our sites. And I do want to mention that our central receiving warehouse was looked at as its own separate site for a risk assessment, and so was our transportation department. So once we come together as a committee, again, we are now going to be tasked with rolling out a prevention program and putting a program together. And then we will be needing to provide training to all of our employees by early May. So once we have that program, I will be reporting to the board again with that completed program as a discussion item. Does anyone have any questions?
Jennifer, anything?
No, no committee group. Thank you.
Right.
Yes, so we had a committee for curriculum study meeting on February 7th. Let's briefly give some updates. So we did receive some updates from our program reviews. Our academic intervention services was seeking endorsements for their program goals. That will be included in the review. You'll see there just some highlights that were touched on by Ms. DeSoto and Ms. Driscoll. For art, not a lot of updates, but they were continuing to do some work on February 9th, which was a half day professional development day. And they'll also be working on our March 15th professional development day as well on their program review. For mathematics, Mr. DiDonato was seeking endorsement for the accomplishments and the program goals. Mr. DiDonato just gave some, an overview of some of the accomplishments since the last program review, and those were endorsed. And then also, he just gave a brief update and highlight on some of the goals. Again, on the minutes here, these are not all of the accomplishments or or all of the goals. And then for social studies, again, not a lot of updates going on for that meeting, but we'll be looking to share their accomplishments at the next meeting and looking for approval. And just as a reminder, when the program reviews are fully endorsed by CCS committee, they will be presenting, you know, their full program reviews to the board. I gave a brief summary on our 2223 assessment data presentation similar that I gave to the board as well. I thought it was important to have that committee, you know, see that information, see that data, that is, you know, that group is our instructional leaders throughout the district. So to really look at that data and start thinking about different ways that departments and buildings can support our continued growth. I also gave an update. We're going to be working with the Successful Practices Network and Dr. Dan Bridges, who's a superintendent from Naperville School District out, which is actually outside of Chicago. And we're partnering with him this year. And he's gonna really, he's actually going to be spending four days in the district, two days next week, and then two days in April. And he's going to be helping us with, you know, that that mindset of future-driven practices, future-focused schools. When I was meeting with him and Dr. Bill Daggett, who we had in earlier this year, has been doing a lot of work with Questar as well. He came highly recommended. District demographics are very similar to an East Greenbush, larger district, but in terms of community support, state testing results and that things, that piece. So he's going to be coming into the district on Thursday and Friday. So we're excited to have him. And his work is going to focus more at Goff Middle School and Columbia High School for for this year. And then also, we have our summer curriculum projects that are going to be becoming due in March, those proposals. And then I just gave a little bit of an update regarding professional development. This meeting was on February 7th. We had a half day professional development day on February 9th, which went very well. The half days, you know, usually our half day schedule for PD is really more building level work and department work. It's just, you know, the timing. We don't have people traveling to all the different buildings. And then on March 15th, we are participating at Questar's Regional Professional Development. At this time, didn't have the full schedule, but since this meeting, that schedule has gone out to our staff for that day. Not on here, but additionally, actually, there was a really good professional development opportunity at Questar today focusing on AI in how it affects education. Mr. Goodwin was there. Mr. Harkin was there. Ms. Harrison from Red Mill was there. And Ms. Dwyer from Columbia High School was also there. So got a lot of good feedback. Actually, Mr. Harkin sent me a couple texts during during the day and said, you know, this is some really good work that we need to make sure we're bringing into this district.
Yeah, it was really, really informative conference. Phil Daggett started out by saying that everyone should have AI as their personal assistant. Just kind of showed us what it could do for us as an administrator, as a teacher, as a superintendent. So they kind of focused in that area and really impressive. I think we really just scratched the surface. I think a lot of teachers are just really lucky thinking that students are cheating on it. I know I had that notion until that conference in June in Washington. We learned more about it, but I honestly think that, as I was saying before, as I was texting this, I really hope that we have some time in September to really show students what they can do just to make it always easier. Especially like I think of it just really quickly, you wake up tomorrow morning, you're like, you just do have AI free do a lesson. Send that into your kids and have your students do that lesson. It takes 30, 40 seconds, but now they're fortunate enough to promise them what you're doing. Instead of just some worksheet they can pull out that's DA or a subject that are DA. And you can monitor that on your Google classroom at home. You can do it from home. But I just think there's so much instruction, instructional support and take the load off of the teacher. I just think they think it's another thing we're asking them to do. And I think Chelsea and Freddie were excellent teachers to go with us because they took it a step further. And, you know, Chelsea's gonna present Monday and in fact, we can present to show teachers the capabilities of.
And we've been doing, actually, Mr. Goodwin, I mean, we meet pretty regularly and we've had several conversations regarding AI. And, you know, at this point, you know, we really want to utilize it, but utilize it as staff, adults. You know, we've had some questions from some teachers saying, you know, I want my students to be able to go on, you know, ChatGPT or or Google Bar. But at this point, you know, that's really not the direction we want to go yet. It's more of, like Mr. Harkin said, having adults realize what it can do for them to start, you know, assisting them in their in their job.
Great. Thanks, Ryan. Just a quick question. With Superintendent Bridges coming, it'd be interesting to hear about his ideas, but also how it relates to projects and facilities related to virtue-focused education, how they're designing their spaces.
He's a, he's very open to us actually doing a visit out in his district as well at some point if we were looking to do that.
And I think, you know, my daughter is a sophomore in college. I know we have other folks who have kids in college. They're using these tools and to prepare our students for the future, our our staff will have to utilize them. Our kids are going to learn about them on their own if they don't. And then it applies to both second, you know, higher education, but also the career fields because businesses are moving to using technology in more and more ways now for the work and design and all those kinds of things. So to like prepare our students even better for for what we do now. It's an enhancement. Thank you. So, Mr. Simons?
Yes, our advocacy committee has been meeting. We've met three times this year. And we have put together a letter for our legislators that we shared with the board in the board packet this weekend. We're planning our visit to the legislature next Friday. We've outlined the issues that are important to us. Some of them you've heard tonight. Mr. Temple, Jesse Temple from the board is on the committee. Dan Garib is on the committee, myself, Jennifer Mulligan. We have two students from the high school who are on our committee. And we also have included Colleen Wise this year to talk about the free lunch and school nutrition program. We put a letter together. The committee reviewed it. And everyone signed it. And we're going to be delivering that to the legislators. It talks about the foundation aid adjustment that hurt our district. It talks about the UPK funding. It talks about the waiver for retirees being needed. We have 12 people that are currently working on a waiver and providing services to our schools. It talks about the momentum that we've got going right now in our district academically and socially emotionally for the kids. We bounced back from COVID and in part, that was because of not only the outstanding leadership in this room, but also our teachers and our support staff and money. Money that was available in foundation aid increases and federal monies came at the same time as we put in extra services for the kids. And we don't want to lose that momentum. We've really made great growth with our kids. And so I will be going as part of NISCUS to the legislature on Monday and Tuesday. And we'll be going as a team from the district to specifically address our issues on Friday with Assemblyman McDonald again, Assemblyman Bendett, and Senator Jake Ashby.
So that concludes our committee reports. Table motions. I don't have anything, Board members. All business? Now move to our consent agenda. A through I. Any questions, comments on the consent agenda? All right. Seeing none. Motion by consent for those items. See your motion. Joanna, you have a second. Jesse, all those in favor? Approved. Addendums, none at this time, right? Mr. Simons? Any new business, Board members? No? Okay. Okay.
Jeff, I have a question. I think there is an article that South Colony changed their mascot. Do you hear?
Wolfpack.
Yes.
It's on the radio, yeah.
They are the Raiders, and now something else. I'm just wondering if there is a reason why, if we knew the reason why.
The state has mandated that any, the state, there's a state mandate from the State Education Department that local school districts, if they have a representation or mascot that is related to Native Americans, in some circumstances, it is permitted to keep that and change the symbolism that's used. In other cases, it's, you have to change both the symbolism and, and it's, it's been a state mandate in place from the Commissioner of Education, the Board of Regents for at least two years now. So I know Abel Park had a process in place. They thought that that process was acceptable to the state. They were told it was, and they were told afterwards it wasn't. So as we've lobbied with Abel Park, this has been an issue that the board has brought forward. But I, I assume it's related to that. So I think in some cases Warriors is permitted, in other cases, it's not, I'm not certain about that. It's, it's coming out of state mandate.
All right. Next item is the public forum. Anyone like to address the board? No? And board forum, we'll start my right with Jesse, nothing? Joanne? John? So I just have a quick comment. Thank you for hosting, Mr. Alvey, and the team was wonderful. Again, always a pleasure coming to DPS out here and the wonderful work that's happening. It's always good to get to the classroom to see the kids do their work. Very nice. I always want to recognize too, there's a lot going on in the district right now in terms of the budget, capital projects, UPK, lots of things going on. I want to just thank the administration again for all the work you're doing and juggling all those things and still focusing on our kids, our principals, administrators, our staff, all the work you do. This is a, is a high-performing district. I hope everybody got a chance to, to vote in the time, Union Best of the Best. So Mr. Adams, say it.
And I just want to remind everybody, you get one vote per day.
One per day.
You can vote every day up until the deadline, which I think is, so.
We were, last two years, we won the
Keep it going.
But I do think that there's, there's so much going on in the district, very positive things happening. You know, the building project we're all excited about, and all the things that you do as a team is terrific. And your team's at the building level. Just keep it going, hang in there. I know what's, uh, hope you had a good break and you're back at it and the push to the end of the school year, so. All right, take care of that. You're welcome. We do not have need for an executive session this evening, so you will. We need a motion to adjourn. Mr. Dunn, you need a second? Mr. Temple, all those in favor? Adjourn. Thank you, thank you, Jack and the PTO for hosting.